...six eight sixty-four, which currently reads that no licensee shall allow or require a person in his employment under twenty-one years of age to dispense, serve, sell, deliver, possess, or take orders for any alcoholic beverages for consumption on premises. The proposal here is to pretty much leave that the way it's set, it states, other than changing the age from twenty-one to eighteen. So that's really what they're doing. Question here, and Greg, was there anything you wanted to add, or John, did anything you wanted to add on this?
No, sir. The state law says that, and I think I've provided a copy of this to you when this first came up, your order says twenty-one, of course, but the state law says that anybody eighteen or above is in, can, short of a local ordinance, dispense, serve, or sell alcohol as a part of their employment in a licensed establishment, and there, and can take orders for those alcoholic beverages, i.e., you know, if you come to a restaurant, you've got a college girl, and sometimes it's twenty years old, takes an order, brings you, you know, your alcoholic beverage before, for them. That's the issue, is whether, you say twenty-one, state law says you can do it down to, no younger than eighteen. There's also a state statute that says that nobody under eighteen may serve alcohol, may sell alcohol, or take alcohol, or take orders for alcoholic beverages, except if you, for young people working in supermarkets, convenience stores, or drugstores where alcohol is sold in bulk and the consumption is off the premises, such as you've got a cashier, or you've got a young man in a supermarket that is, is taking an order for alcohol, or for, and just takes a six-pack, puts it in a buggy, and takes it out, or sells it in a convenience store or a drugstore. So that law is not going to change, and you adhere to that. The only issue is whether or not you wish to locally reduce the age from twenty-one to the state law of eighteen, and allow those, between those three years, to dispense, serve, or sell alcohol as a part of their duties in a licensed establishment, i.e. a restaurant that has been serving alcohol.
Thank you, sir. Nancy, I think we need someone to sign up for this one.
Mr. Callaway, and David Callaway and Diane Leonard.
All right, Mr. Callaway.
Okay, now Greg, Diane Leonard, she's worked at Callaway Garden for thirty-two years, and is a manager of the Country Kitchen, actually knows what she's talking about. If you don't mind, will come up. Wow, y'all have an interesting job. Thank you for your service. I don't know, what, how you do with all that stuff? Here's another. About a year ago, we decided that we wanted to serve beer and wine at the country store. For the first sixty-four years of that building, we didn't. But increasingly, we found that our guests would say, if you have a glass of wine, you can have a bottle of beer with it. And again, we wanted to serve it. So typical Callaway Garden special, we studied it for about six months, and found that we already had the right. The license was there, we just had to serve it. And as we started to pull the trigger and say, okay, we'll serve beer and wine, two lovely kids, Daniel Gomez and Anna Crescato, came over to us and said, please don't do that, Mr. Callaway. Why? Because we're not twenty-one, and if you do this, we'll lose our guns. And so we hit the pause button, and talked about it. And basically, this, this comes down to, we would like to hire our eighteen to twenty-one year olds in this county and have them work at Callaway Gardens and restaurants where we serve alcohol. I, I know there is legitimate thought processes, let's don't do that to eighteen, twenty-one year olds, I'm very comfortable with that. But what happens is, is that as we start to serve alcohol in all our other restaurants, we don't have eighteen, twenty-one year olds serving. It's just because it's so difficult to make that work, where you've got somebody serving alcohol until they're not, and eleven people, in one night, we have eleven people at a time up there, it gets very complicated. So the practical impact is, is that we, we would have hired twenty-one year olds. And there's a lot of good kids in this county that we'd like to continue to work here and not in Columbus where they can do it. So that's it, we'd like to hire our kids and keep our kids, and we're doing that to be able to serve, or we'll go to twenty-one, if it's okay, we can do that too, with the purposes to keep our kids. Because one other thing, there's a certification that the state has made available to servers, that this would be a good thing. We were planning on sending our kids through the, through our kid, but I don't know if we'll talk about it or not. That's it. We would strongly support this, and all that Diane's saying, her piece is here. In our restaurants where we serve alcohol, we do not have eighteen to twenty-one year olds serving, we don't wait. Only the Country Kitchen, and all our kids up there are begging us to please figure out a big network.
And as he stated, the main reason, or me as being a manager, what I've observed is that these kids have either graduated or about to graduate from high school, and they're going to go on to college, so they're trying to make money, and being a server is one of the best ways to make money, to get you through the summers and get you through to college. Therefore, if they work in a restaurant that they're eighteen and they can't sell that alcohol, then yes, they do, they want to go on to Columbus. I've already lost two to Columbus for that reason, because, first of all, it brings the check average up and their tip average up, if they can't sell a glass of wine or beer with them. So that's helpful to them to work somewhere where they can serve alcohol. And we would like for them to stay in our community. I've had one girl that's seventeen, that's about to be eighteen, been with me for a year, and I would hate to lose her to go on somewhere else, you know, if we can't sell alcohol. The other thing is, is just, we don't intend to push it drastically. As you know, with the Country Kitchen, it's a nice scene, and nice sunsets and things, and a lot of our guests, especially because we have to sell the wine in the store, and a lot of our guests think that we sell in the restaurant, so when they come and ask them, we don't, maybe they go off somewhere else, so we, you know, that is a business too. I don't know whether they go along the Callaway or go down the road, but with this setting, it's just, a lot of people have requested to have a glass of wine or beer, since they enjoy the view. But the other thing, of just having somebody twenty-one, it's really hard to get people who have already gotten out of school, you know, they've already got the steady jobs, so it's really hard to get a lot of twenty-one year olds. But having one person be twenty-one and serve for everybody is just really, and the amount of business I do during fantasy and lights, and I can have eleven servers on the floor, and I do five hundred people in a night, one person can't handle, or even two to run around, you know, it's just really hard to do. The main thing is, I would just like to keep them here and keep them working with me.
Okay, any questions? Of your waitstaff at the country store, what, how many, what percent is under twenty-one percent?
By now, I only have about four that are under eighteen.
Under twenty-one.
I mean, under twenty-one. The other thing is, I'm like about five to six servers short, and part of the reason I don't hire totally right now is because if I hire eighteen and we go, we decide to sell alcohol and we can't use them, then I'm going to have to lose them. So, you know, potentially, if I could get eighteen year olds, I could fill up my spots sooner, and I can try and find a twenty-one year old. Because right now, they all work where they sell alcohol, so I've got to be able to do it first, and then I might get some twenty-one year olds, but now I can't.
Okay. Any other questions, or answer the question?
You made mention, correct me if I'm wrong, of a state class or corps or something? Is that mandated?
It's not mandated, it's optional. It's not even the state, the state is authorized, but it's a group. ServerCertificationCorps.com authorized by the state of Georgia, by the state of Georgia, and their class is responsible serving of alcohol on premises. We want our kids to do that, because it's good.
He will meet with us, with the chair of departments, that's his organization, is where he's at, and they will eventually come to us to ask for some certification with partners in county.
We're a favorite certification with partners, that's a good thing.
Actually, it's a irony, that kids, that young adults are allowed to sell it in a grocery store, where there's, as opposed to being served in a more controlled environment, they're not allowed in a restaurant. Just imagine them, you know, grocery clerk, how well-supervised he is, as compared to how well-supervised someone in a restaurant is, and all the possible complications.
A little discussion?
Yeah. Yeah, and all other questions, for now, then that's a real discussion. With all due respect to...
The Supreme Court.
Real regulation.
Yeah. That's what I have for, oh, we're in discussion, so I'm sorry.
Well, all right, I will entertain the motion.
I'll make the motion that we lower the age to eighteen, that serving alcohol be allowed in this county.
All right, the motion.
Second?
Do we have second? Do we have second? All right, and then discussion.
With all due respect to Mr. Callaway, who is a considered good friend, I'm totally opposed, totally opposed to this change. I speak not only as a county commissioner, but as a juvenile court judge for Harris County, and also as a father. And as, as part of my training for juvenile court, we have a number of presentations on issues affecting young people. And alcohol and young people is a deadly condition. We've seen that over and over. In fact, even in yesterday's Columbus paper, looking at changes in some of the state laws with reference to alcohol. I hear what you're saying, and all that, but as far as the impact of alcohol with young people, and, and we know the drink, as always happens, and always will, but instead of making it easier, we need to make it more difficult. And so I speak as a, as a father, I have had a child who has had problems with underage drinking, to the extent that he was in a very, very serious accident, which almost took his life, at age eighteen. Like I said, young people are going to drink, I'm not sure how he was able to get it, he couldn't buy it at age eighteen, but nevertheless, he was able to get a hold of alcohol, and like I said, almost took his life. Every parent's nightmare, I got a call, actually a call, and I had a Harris County deputy sheriff show up at my door at almost midnight, telling me I needed to call Tripp County 911, because a vehicle registered in my name was involved with this. Praise the Lord, he, he recovered, he's okay. But that's every parent's worst nightmare. It's a combination of young people and alcohol. Also, part of my juvenile court training, like I said, we get presentations on different issues, and we have presentations on alcohol and young people. And the problem is, is that the younger, juvenile starts drinking, the more damage it does to his brain, the human brain is not mature until like ages twenty-four, twenty-seven, so a young people drinking is a, is a lot more serious of an issue than someone in their mid twenties drinking. Doesn't have the impact on the brain that a young person has. And as far as an eighteen year old being able to sell, you know, a six-pack at a convenience store is one thing, selling it, whether, or it's being served is another. And the reason I mention that is, with my son, just the smell of alcohol creates an intense desire to drink, just the smell of it. And I think it's bad policy, I'm absolutely, totally against a change or reducing it. And I would encourage my fellow commissioners to vote against it.
And I would like to say that I also am opposed to changing the age to eighteen. I think that as adults, parents, grandparents, and commissioners of this county, we do not need to place our young people in positions where they might fail. And I think that there is a certain portion of that younger age adults, semi-adults, some of them, who may fall, who may be, what's the one?
Maybe with...
No, the peer pressure is what I'm trying to get at, is peer pressure is tremendous, is tremendous. And, and, you know, and I, I don't know whether you have children, but I know you were eighteen at one time, the peer pressure, some, some younger teens can handle that, and some can't. And those that can't, may find themselves in a position of being pressed by their friends to possibly sell to them and their underage. And I just think that we are not looking out for our teenagers as we should be as adults, if we place them in positions where they might fail.
Nancy, anyone else to sign up to speak? All right.
Let me just say one thing, I'll let you guys go. I think the collective wisdom, this group is strong, and we're with you. To me, it's a matter of intended consequences versus unintended consequences. The intended consequence, protecting our youth, is, is absolutely the top thing on our minds. The unintended consequence is those guys that want to serve as a waiter or waitress at Columbus do it, so they're standing here. We don't get a chance to model those kids.
But that's not Harris County.
But anyway...
Mr. Chairman, the motion on the floor.
So anyway, thank you very much for your wisdom. You always make great calls.
All right, are there any citizens here?
Mark, any motion?
Well, nobody signed up. Now, I will say this, we do have the option of either having this as the sole, second, sole reading, and then voting on it tonight, or we could elect to have a second reading, if anyone has any interest in that.
But you've already had a motion.
I understand. Okay.
I'm just here to raise a flag, so...
This is a, it's, we certainly want to, to keep our kids in Harris County, we'd love to keep them working, and gain them a point. Yeah, I was a teenager, I had two boys, and certainly that was something that you worried about with them. I actually had, quote, a contract with them regarding alcohol use and driving and that type of stuff. But it, but it is tough, I think it's, it's not an easy decision, but fair debate, I think, too. Anyone else want to have any comments before we call it above?
My position is that the onus here is on the licensee, and we need to be very deliberate in to whom we issue the licenses, regardless whether it's eighteen, twenty-one, and serving, we're not changing the age of drinking whatsoever, and of course, that's a totally different issue. But we, if we don't, if we're not comfortable with the entities we're licensing, then it has to be law we need to change to make this strict enforcement.
Well, I'm not comfortable with a decision of eighteen, nineteen, or twenty.
But it's an objective, not subjective, and therefore, the leadership and then any entity that, that serves and sells has to be sure, because a twenty-one year old is going to probably know a lot more kids that are age eighteen, or nineteen, or twenty than eighteen year olds that are already being, obviously, younger than that, if there's a concern around their judgment. So I think the concern would be the same, age-wise, to me, my opinion.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion to lower the age, serving age, in for on-premise consumption of eighteen? Please signify by raising your hand. Close. All right, that motion fails. Do I have any? I don't think we need a counter motion, it just states where we're doing things.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is request from the recreation board to allow documents via e-signature. John's here. It's John.
We have two documents that address that specifically, and the record for usage of the bylaws.
All right.
They're both under the code of conduct, for the ones for the parents, code of conduct on how to behave themselves at football fields and that sport, youth, youth activities, the others for the coaches. Right now, both of those state that we have to obtain a hard copy from, from these folks. We're coming into, I guess, most people who may already into a new age, with the computers and so forth, and all of my sports programs are now geared up to go with these signature. It eliminates all the hard copies. At present time, we, I'm not telling you, come on background checks, we handle throughout the entire year, five thousand hard copy documents between the code of conducts for parents and coaches, for each sport, we have, to get it in football, we still have to hand it back to them again, with baseball and so forth, so we've got to repeat, but it's just a constant thing on us, and then the state also requires concussion awareness package that we have to hand out for each sport at the same parenting time, which we have to maintain records of, and we have all these documents. So we just kind of want to move along with the times, and soccer's been doing it for quite some time, we've had a battle with soccer, getting hard copies, even though they still have it on the, in their registration forms, all the programs that they're going to do, soccer has the Blue Sombra football, it's getting, I'm the GoPro, but...
Watch me GoPro.
Watch me GoPro. They're all giving us access to their websites, so we don't have to do the paperwork, we just go to the website and do all the checks that the county requires that we do. So that's basically, I don't know, we're looking at here, is being able to move forward and go electronic.
All right. So you say you already have the equipment?
No, they, each sports association has the equipment, football's involved, we don't need computers to a sport, also we can do registration at the, at the rec center.
So, so there's no additional expense?
Not to us, but I can see, now, as long as they allow us to access their websites within this, and all of that information.
And are these signatures made in the presence of the recreation department?
No, they don't have registrations.
So at the registration, so you have an employee or someone there?
No, ma'am, we haven't.
How are you sure that this is the person?
That's one of the things I think Martin would explain a little bit more about, they're guaranteeing us that these signatures cannot be changed, but that's been my concern all along, if somebody says we didn't hand them a concussion package, how do I prove somebody, you know, at the last minute, soccer just checks it off, and says, yeah, they, you know, they've got a copy, but that's part of, and building the software, each one of these programs that they're doing. That's, that was a very concern, the record kicked around, it was five, six months or more, and that's making, they just decided to make the change and go with it, so.
And if I could ask the county attorney if he's good with this, if he's good with it, then...
As a matter of policy, I think it's, that's up to your questions, whether you take an electronic signature, or you take a, you know, you take a, have to have somebody, you know, actually, him write it out, so that it's there, I think it's a matter of policy. Nowadays, it seems that electronic signatures are becoming the mode.
Well, usually, they are verified, somebody's verifying if it is their signature at the time, and I guess that's where I was headed.
That's what Ben are concerned, but when I did my income tax this year, I saw, or typed my signature, well, not, their signature was on the paperwork, I had to sign for it later, but that was an electronic signature, so if they typed my name, that's what I'm concerned, I have IRS is taking as an electronic signature, Ben, so.
Yeah, that's, so there's no, no check or balances to assurance that it is the parent's?
Other than what's in the software, that's all I know.
So when, when they're actually signing it, they are at registration, so who's...
Well, not some, they're built from their own, they can register online now.
Oh, okay, that's one, that's one.
You have to type signature that they put in there.
So it's just really a type signature online?
There's no handling, like, I always think it was that little thing that UPS guy comes around and you sign, and once they type their name at the bottom.
This is before we all, because once those forms were approved as part of the bylaws, you have to give approval before they can be changed. So if you want this form to come out, some appropriate wording to go in, you'll have to okay it before you get...
Did anybody else sign up to speak?
Mr. Parsons.
He's president of football.
Come forward and lay the rest and make the...
My name is Mark Parsons, Harris County Football President, or Football President of Waterford Drive.
Which one?
Waterford Drive. And I'll be brief, I'm, I'm just here to kind of clarify, answer a few questions. We, the football board's been working on this since December. We've had a lot of, of parents, you know, some new parents come into the county, we've had some... had some, some of the parents, you know, because we have five different communities what inspired, you know, having a centralized registration and data collection, information for correspondence through parents, you know, when was game day, when we had cancellations, because we were relying on, you know, just a phone conversation, a lot of text messages, you know, to try to get the information if we had cancellation of games. So it led up to this point to where we had an e-signature for centralized registration. Give you a little bit of background on how we decided on which company we were going to go with, or, because, you know, this was a process of a few months even deciding who we're going to go with. Soccer uses, Gunner Club, Blue Sambro. We decided with Watch Me GoPro. Watch Me GoPro, the three founders had a background in the health industry, because we were worried about security for the children. There's a few features within the website to where you have, you have to have authorization and access, you know, to the players, because there's a lot of player information, you know, you don't want pictures of people's children and have the right or wrong person on the website. So these were all conversations that we had through our meetings, you know, the past six months. The background for the company being in the health industry for security features, Todd, Buford, Mark Ryan, and David Vaughn, all were in electronic health records, so they're very familiar with security features, compliant with all the federal laws for e-signatures. There's a couple of different laws for e-signature verification, like the IRS accepts now. I guess one of the questions was about, you know, verification, you know, e-verification, verifying, who's verifying the signature. There's a lot of information that you have to put within the content of the registration to verify, so it's not like, you know, somebody's just signing, you know, signing up, and, you know, it's a, it's a go sign up, they have to verify a number of different, you know, birthday, or social security, you know, they have to verify those things prior to being able to sign for that. It's not, you're not going to be able to match up, just say, I'm this person, and sign up, you have to put your, your date of birth, your address, you know, and there's four different companies out there that actually maintain that data and that information in order to say, yes, you are, you know, John, you know, Washington at one eight nine, you know, Baker Drive, or whatever. So this company, you know, having that background in the health industry and being able to secure that information, we felt that this would be the right company in order to assist us with our e-signature and our database process. You know, some other things we had, aside from my idea from just football, was keeping in mind the Recreation Department, saving man-hours as far as the amount of paperwork shuffling that out. There was a big concern with our board as far as the amount of paperwork that had to go from one hand to another, to another hand, to another hand. I mean, you're going from having the coach gather the information, maybe even a birth certificate, you know, gathering that information. That information goes to one of the commissioners, that commissioner has it in his car for a week, and then he finally gets it up to the rec department. So having this information, this sensitive information in a paper form, you know, and John said, you know, five thousand papers floating around with our children, you know, was also a concern for liability long-term because of all this, you know, identity theft going on, and, you know, so, so being securing the data information, this is the company we decided to go with, so I didn't mean to be lengthy, but, you know, there's a number of different reasons that we chose this company, a number of different reasons we chose, you know, to try to push through the e-signature verification, and also help John out, and Ashley, that we could try to generate into the 21st century. So, that's all I have to say.
But there's no cost to the rec department, just the community bears the cost of the program?
The community bears the cost, and, and we spoke with the rec department, or the rec board, rec department, we've also been in communication with the other boards, you know, from soccer, basketball, baseball, and so we've had some correspondence with those different boards. I think the next step is really if it's going to actually be a centralized registration for all sports. You know, right now, we're just representing the football board.
Right.
With Watch Me GoPro, it's a matter of clicking and checking the box for softball, baseball, football, you know, and John would have immediate access to that. It's very user-friendly, and we can sit with Ashley, they have webinars that we can, you know, have training sessions with. There's no additional cost. If you spend fifty hours a week on the phone with them, or on email, there's no additional cost to us, it's unlimited support. Some of the other companies that we looked at, they would charge a support fee. So if we said, we don't understand this, or we want to add features to this, then it doesn't cost us, and in addition, it doesn't cost the county anything additional, as of now, as of now. I mean, if they adopted, you know, later on, then you guys can vote again, so, you know, but the fees are very normal for us as well.
Okay, thank you.
The way the question's worded on the agenda, it just says, request from the Recreation Board to allow documents via e-signature, doesn't mention specific sports. And I guess I would raise that question, is this something we want, just a generic, or you just want limited to football?
No, we want it for all sports.
For the player.
They're all geared up, basically, already, except for some.
All right, any, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to enter to the 21st century?
All right, do I have a second?
I'll say so.
Motion in a second, discussion.
That is to change, actually, it is to change, right? The bylaws?
No, it's the forms.
Okay, just the forms. The bylaws only dress it, okay, all right, thanks.
Penix B and D.
Okay.
Penix B and D?
Yes.
Penix B and D?
Yes.
B and D. All right, any discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? All right, wood, water rates, LAAs, churches?
Yes, sir. A couple of meetings ago, we had a discussion when we had some of the homeowners associations that got bumped up from a residential to a commercial rate. Had a discussion with Jeff and ran it by some of the commissioners, and basically come to the agreement that anything that's a not-for-profit, that be that a church, homeowners association, or residential, would be treated at residential rate, if it was full profit, it would be treated at commercial rate. So for some reason, whether you had a homeowners association that was, say, a golf club or whatever, were for profit, then they would still be charged commercial rate, but this gives them the guidance they need, we just basically need to get it on the record so that they have guidance when they move forward.
I have a question. If, for example, a homeowners association does have commercial, but they set two different meters, one for the golf course and the other for the rest, if they're willing to do that, they have one, well, it seems like a big failure.
Makes sense, if they have two meters, one's commercial, that's commercial rates, if one's just a handle of landscaping, should be...
Presidential.
If they want to get two meters.
If they only get one meter and it does both, then they're going to get charged a commercial rate.
They'd be good at both, just the way I...
Makes sense to me, and I think I'd want the ministry to follow that, so I think that's a good approach, and I think the motion will be...
All right, and make sure that delineation is in there about the...
Years.
Years, okay. All right, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Motion in a second, discussion. All in favor, signify by raising your hand.
Are we going to, Greg, are we going to notify those different homeowners associations that have known?
We're just going to, have a happy dance. I'm sure Andy F. Coverton has wonderful articles. There's not that many of them, but if we need to write in each letter, it's good.
I think they were written letter in the first place, is what, you got all the story.
All right, next is survey, clear cut, Parkside on 208.
I've done some homework to Adams, David Adams, have they surveyed the Parkside previously that we got from the school board? And they have done it previously, what we really, what we need here is go back and get the corners delineated so that we can go in and clear it, so what I'm requesting is permission to, whatever it costs to get the corner set, and then clear cut with the appropriate buffer, where it affects residential property, I would say, twenty-five foot buffer, and then the screen buffers as required, so we can go ahead and get things cleared out, so we can get in there and look at topography, because there are some, there's one intermittent screen that runs through there, and some other features that we really need to get things cleared out, and then be able to go in and finalize our plan before we go ahead with anything else, so. Need optimization to get the survey updated and go ahead, and then, once we get that done and contract, we get it clear cut, because except in the area, I will retain the ability in the area that's going to be where the school's going to be in the future, perhaps leave some spec, go ahead and clear, but leave some specimens there for people that want to have things on the play, things like that, so if we find some good specimens in there, we'll preserve those in areas that we're not looking to do sports activities, because they did reserve that one area up front where they had the right for the school to be. So we'll exercise some discretion there, but the other area we pretty much need to just clear out.
Okay. All right, I have a motion. I'll make that motion, second.
It's going to be the marking lines on the survey.
Yeah, he's already got, they said they've already got the survey.
So it's going to just be marking the lines?
Yeah, delineate, so we don't have somebody's property, because...
Discussion. I'll carry the motion, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Any others?
Well, the only other comment I have is up until about, maybe five, ten minutes ago, I don't know if you all had the view that I had, but the folks with the cemetery were out there talking, and I was seeing a lot of hits, giving positive affirmation, so that was a good sign.
Good, all right.
But no, sir, that's all I have.
Mr. Taylor, anything for you?
No, sir.
All right, now, if I can make a motion for executive session, personnel.
Second.
Second. All in favor? We don't need Nancy, or John, or Greg.